This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
So I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for June 30th at 6:00 to 2:00 p.m. Uh, we have a quorum with myself, uh, Ellen DeBruno and Stephen Johnson.
Rosen.
Yep, and, uh, John may join us. Uh, Dan LaValley will not be here tonight, but we have a quorum and then we also have a quorum with the Finance Committee. So Reggie, would you like to call that group together?
Well, we'll call the meeting to order. We have, uh, Jamie, Doug, and me.
Okay, and Becky's just coming in.
Okay, Becky's just joining.
Yeah.
Oh, I have to do it here.
Oh.
This is actually mirroring from my, my screen up there.
Yep. Okay, so we have the Finance Committee and us. All right, very good. Okay, so, um, I'm, we're just gonna jump right into the agenda tonight, which is basically to continue on our meeting with the, uh, approval of end of year, uh, transfers. Uh, and I think we had a few that we had done in the last meeting and a few more to go. So, thanks, everybody, from the school perspective, uh, highway, um, who else is here?
Art.
Tom Clark, uh, Fire Department, um, thanks for being here to answer any questions. So, let us go ahead with the School Department and understand what the transfer requests are. If you wanna project those, Scott, and, uh, yep, and then, uh, I guess Dawn, are you gonna speak to those or?
Yes, I'll speak to those.
Okay.
Um, so hello, everyone. I think what I, what I'd like to do is just, um, focus on this blue and the, and the, the dark blue and the light blue, um, starting with what, what it says, staff salaries, um, sped, central office, et cetera. And if you go over to the light blue where it says variance to budget, um, you'll see that we're showing about a $330,000, um, almost a $331,000 variance to the budget.
Dawn, can you make that a little bit bigger, please?
Uh, let's see if I can.
Cause we don't need to see necessarily the right hand side, but that's, yeah, that's gonna be.
Is that better?
I think that's better. Focus is that good?
Can you see that?
Yeah, better.
Yep, yep, let me, uh-oh, hold on.
Oh.
It's down.
Moving off.
Yep, let me move it up. There we go. And then move it down here.
Perfect, that's great. Thank you.
That'll work. Okay, so if you look under this, um, this says what our first, the dark blue, first blue column of numbers shows what our approved FY25 budget is. Um, the FY25 actuals, as of the time we did this analysis, which was at the end of May, and then we did a June projection based on information and conversation with, um, Eliza and, and, um, payroll, et cetera, and we came to a full year forecast. So what this does is it compares the FY25 approved budget to the full year forecast, and that, that results in a deficit, um, of about 330,000. Now, when I say deficit, we always knew that there would be offsets to this number, and the offsets are down below. So I want to, I want to first explain why we're over budget according to, um, this, this analysis, and then what is going to be done about it. So if you look at this yellow column, this is the percentage of the total projected variance that each line is of the total. So of 330,000, 78% of it relates to sped. Um, and that is a contract services which was budgeted at $8,000 by those who did the budget last year, and the actuals are 257,000. I mean, the actuals were, were 257,000 over what was budgeted. So that is accounting for, you know, the lion's share of the variance, the 78%. The 12% of the salaries being over at 40,000 is as a result of substitute, uh, substitutes that were required for various purposes, um, maternity's. So people were paid their sick time that they had accrued for maternity's, and I believe there was another, um, let's see, sick leave. And so after the sick leave and the sick time for the maternity people were exhausted, we also had to pay for the substitutes that were covering those positions. Does that sound right, Eliza?
Yes, that's what I was going to say. So it was two maternity leaves and a long-term illness. Unfortunately, a teacher was ill for most of the year.
So that accounts for, right there, we're accounting for, you know, 90% of the variance. And then, uh, also, as Eliza will tell you, we are over about 11, 11% of the variance relates to the 36,000, and that's buildings and grounds, maintenance of equipment. And you had a number of service calls this year, Eliza, that weren't anticipated. Is that correct?
Correct. Yep.
And then, um, there were some, you know, a very small amount, um, of technology, um, and hardware purchases that exceeded the budget, and then the School Committee, um, the dues for this, the Massachusetts Association of School Committee, um, were not budgeted for. So that accounts for the remainder. And before we move on, does anybody have any questions about, uh, this portion? So I do, I agree. I think most of it's fairly straightforward. I'm sorry, I say hand raised.
Yeah, Jamie, sorry, I don't know why.
Oh, hi, Jamie.
Hi. Um, so Dawn, my question is, is why were we $257,000 short for the sped transportation? And, um, like, as to this committee, like, are we, did we budget for, for this year for FY26? So we don't have this $257,000 shortfall again?
Excellent questions, Jamie. And, um, it wasn't in transportation, it was in, um, contract services. And I would say that this was as a result of the fact that when people got together to do the budgeting the year prior to this, um, they did not communicate directly with the sped director or the sped director did not communicate with the people doing the budget, letting them know what the costs were going to be. Because this is, this is typically, um, what you would see for sped contract services. So I believe this was a budgeting error, and, um, for next year FY26, um, when we met with Eliza and went through it, we also met with the Director of Pupil Services, Amy, um, Drake, and went over everything with a fine-tooth comb. So I feel as though we have, anything that we know about as of this date has been factored into next year's budget. And therefore, I would not anticipate this kind of a variance related to budgeting.
So for FY26, I'm imagining that the number's around the 600,000, not the three-something?
Um, I can show you what that is when we, uh, well, do you want me to jump off of this and show you what that is now? Cause I do have that spreadsheet. Okay, but let me just take, let me just take a look at it on my screen because I did pull that up. Um, and sped, let's see, if we do that, sped is budgeted in '26 to be 627,928.
Perfect, so that's an increase of 27,000 for anticipating for future.
Yes.
That's great.
Yes, yes. So, um, now let me go back here. Yes, that is exactly right. So we tried to be very uh, careful, um, when we went. I, I found that a lot of the issues that I'm seeing have to really do with communication and siloed work. And so trying to work together, you know, we're working more closely with Bradley and Scott, and then within the central office, having people work with one another, I think that will, um, go a long way towards, uh, better, better results.
Well, when you're asking us as a committee to, you know what I'm saying, consider passing, you know, this is a $247,000 deficit, but now we know that next year we won't be here again because we budgeted for it. So, you know, the reasoning, I'm, I'm new to this committee, is an accounting error from before, but we've done the work to make sure that hopefully we're not here next year. So to me, that's, you know.
Exactly. And, and, um, while I wasn't here last year, I've really tried to work with, with my staff to understand what might have happened. So I'm giving you the best analysis based on what we've been able to see. Um, and then, so we don't leave it there at the 330,000. What we have here, um, below that, and I'm gonna move all this up now to just this line.
Dawn, could I interrupt for a second? Uh, could we ask?
Oh.
Who the, uh?
They can't hear us, cause they're not admitted.
Oh, they're not admitted, yeah. Hmm. Okay, we've got a couple of strays coming in here. We don't know who they are. Um.
Could be John, maybe?
No, I just texted him. He's, oh, he's not going to join us. Um. Let's try and pick it up.
Alright, sorry, Dawn, go ahead.
Yeah, but I'd like this person to identify themselves, please.
Oh, okay.
Now they are.
Okay, so this person who just joined, could you identify who you are?
I think, oh, up here.
Someone named Owner. We'd appreciate your being off mute and telling us who you are. If you're a member of the town, that's fine. Wanting to listen in, that's fine. We just don't like to have anonymous people. What do you want to do?
Um. Just go back in there.
Alright. I'm gonna put you in the waiting room for a minute until we figure this out.
Go ahead, Dawn. Sorry.
Okay.
Alright, so, um, then continuing. School choice is, um, a source of revenue that, um, is available. And, and at the time of the budget, when we knew the budget was 6 million, or whomever knew, the School Committee knew that the budget was 6,562, they said we are going to allocate 309,622 of school choice to offset some of those expenses in the general fund. So you have the general fund, and then you have these special revenue accounts, and, and these special revenue accounts can often offset the amounts that are in the budget and therefore lower the contribution um, that the towns can make. So 309, and as of the end of May, we had applied 271. We're expecting, based on everything we understood at that time, to charge another 76, almost 77,000. So that means we would have charged by the end of the year about 348,000. And this little number over here in red and in brackets means this is how much over what we said we were gonna charge, we are. And therefore, this would be part of the request to the town for additional funding. So is that as clear as mud, or is that, do you understand what I'm doing there? Because this is going to be all the way down. This is how we're going to analyze it.
So we're checking the debt for additional funding for when? For now?
Um, yes, as, as, not until we get to the bottom. When we get to the bottom, you'll see what the total amount is. But this amount has already been vetted with Scott and with Bradley, and there's a plan for it. But yes, this would be the additional amount that we are over, and it has to be covered somewhere. So we have recommendations for some of the coverage coming from special revenue accounts, but once we've exhausted all of those, then the remainder has to come from the town. So I'll just keep going line by line. The foundation res-
I'm sorry, Dawn. So the timing of the school of choice payments, um, the payments, how do those spread from the, you know, the other towns that are sending students?
Um, they are received, um, I think those are received monthly from the state, the school choice.
And, and they relate, and they're not, um, like, for future services, they relate to the current school year?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct. Now, you do have a balance in school choice, um, and we can talk about the balances later, but you do have a balance, but this is what was identified, um, as being used for this year. So school choice, just to clarify, school choice is one of those, um, accounts that rolls over from year to year, and you don't have to use it by a particular time, whereas there are limits on other revolving accounts. You have to use it within the current year, or you have to use it within 27 months. This is one where you can accumulate a balance over time. And, um, Bradley and I can talk later about the balances. But right now, um, th- this first line shows that, um, we're expecting to use about 348,000 of what's in school choice, and it's $38,000 over what we had planned. Then there's the foundation reserve. The foundation-
Excuse me, Dawn?
Yes.
So you talked about not spending all of the money that you have in that reserve. How much more is there?
In the school, in the school choice?
Choice, yeah.
Yeah. Um, well, I will tell you what I think it is, and Bradley, maybe we can, um, confirm that. This right here says Brad, this one says balances Bradley. Oh, gosh, let's see if we can make that any bigger. Um, so you can see that? Are you able to see that?
Yes.
Better.
Yeah, we'll zoom in on that. Okay, so.
135,000?
Yes, that's what we projected to be at the end of the year. Now Bradley, are you with me on that? I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but this is based on what we understood the balance was at June 30th, um, at 12:31:24. This is what had been spent as of that date. This is the revenue we were anticipating. Therefore, this is what we thought the balance would be at June 1, and then projected remaining spending, which you had seen from the previous chart, and, um, the projected revenue that would come in, um, still, and so we would be at 135.
So what's the theory behind not zeroing it out and spending it all?
Um, that is definitely a, um, School Committee, uh, purview, and somebody from the School Committee can speak to that. Um, Kim or Margaret?
Yeah, hi, I can do that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, um, school choice, we typically like to leave a balance in there to cover anything unexpected that comes up during the year. Um, for example, if we get an unanticipated out-of-district placement, um, those can easily cost over $100,000. Um, so we like to have that there just in case we need it.
And I can say that that is, um, that is an approach that all of the schools I've seen so far do utilize because it's unpredictable, these out-of-district placements, and they're very costly. But, um, that's the balance, but we're still going to take some more out of that balance. So.
Dawn, I can als- I can also add, thank you, Kim, for, um, answering that question. It's, and it's not just out-of-district cost, it's also, you know, we just had six new students enroll at Norris, new students to Southampton that moved in, um, over the last three days. And with that, sometimes comes students who may need hearing or vision or any other, you know, services so, that we did not budget for. And there are students that we, that we need to service. They live in the town of Southampton. So it is always, um, practice to leave some money in there just for those unexpected costs, which we would later put in the budget when we do the budget for the following year.
I guess to me, it just seems like, excuse me, accounting, just moving money around since it's all kinda fungible anyway. But. I mean, you budget each year, it's gonna, you're gonna have a, a surplus or a shortfall. And you've, and you've gotta address it at your end. Just a thought.
I do think that, I think you're right, Reggie, that there are a number of things that need to be addressed long-term. So, um, I might touch upon one of, another one of those when we get there, but, um, this is, you know, just to explain how things are, what we're proposing and what is being proposed for this year. So the foundation reserve, um, that originally was budgeted using $25,000. However, um, when we got further into the year, it was clear that, um, we couldn't spend that this year because it had been reserved for next year. It had already been applied to next year's balance, and there wasn't enough money in there to cover this year and next year. So if I go to, let me go to this, um, let me just go to the recap. Um, give me one more second. If we, if I now shh, put this up on the screen. Um. See, do this, do this. If you look, if you look at next year's budget, so FY26, you will see that-
You're sharing the old one, Dawn. You're sharing the old one.
Oh, I'm, I'm still, you, you still can't see that? Oh, cause I put it on that screen. Okay, let me, let me-
Wait, that's fine. Just, I mean.
Alright, I'll just tell you that, I'll just tell you that you can see it now?
Yeah, well.
No, you see the old one.
That's the old one still.
Yeah, alright, well, um, let me, I'll continue to share the old one, and I'll just tell you that, that next year in FY26, um, 120,000 of the foundation reserve is being applied to the '26 budget. And just because of, of balances that were available and not available, we cannot put that 25,000 this year towards it. It's, it's the balance as of 12:31 is going to be applied to FY26. Then we get to, then we get to the preschool revolving. So the preschool revolving, we had, uh, originally, the School Committee had, had identified $50,000 of that that was going to be charged, um, towards this budget, or used towards this budget. And what's going to happen is 71,000, in fact, is going to be, um, has been applied as of the end of May. An additional 21 is being spent, and so that leaves you, we all told we were expecting 71, but it leaves us in another 21 that we're going to have to come up with. And, um, that's primarily because the school revolving account is dwindling, and that is a longer-term issue. We presented to the School Committee last, last week to say that it's something that needs to be considered. Um, we are collecting about 45 to 40, to 50,000 dollars a year in preschool revolving, and it's costing us considerably more than that. Um, so I don't know that you wanna get into it now, but I will say that that's something that, um, we will all need to look at um, as we move forward. But for today and for FY25, there would be an additional 21,000 that is being spent, um, to support the preschool. Um, and it is not available in the preschool revolving account. And then, when we get down to Circuit Breaker, the budget, it was budgeted to apply 183,011, and we are going to do that. So this still needs to be applied. So the figures that you saw of the budget didn't have this offset factored in yet, so this factors it in. Um, the same with Rural Aid. We had, we had, um, projected using 117, and when I say we, I mean, the people who were here at that time had projected 117, and we will still be applying 117. So we will be moving these monies off the general fund onto these special revenue accounts. So it would thereby lower the amounts on the general fund and lower your variance. Um, the same thing with, um, sped 240. Oh, and then, just so you don't think I'm skipping over it, these two particular ones, um, they're, they were not budgeted for, but they were used for certain expenses. So I can't reduce the overage from the budget because they weren't in that budgeted figure to begin with. So it's not offsetting the budget, but it was used for other expenditures. Um, so we're still applying that, and then for sped 240, we are still, um, we have planned to use 130, we're going to use 150, so that's 20,000, um, 600 short.
One more question about those, Dawn, because on the balance sheet, it showed 126,000 surplus, but like, as we discussed previously, that there's, you know, a, a certain amount that they like to keep in that account as a safety net. I'm thinking because of things that pop up, so I guess that-
Except, except, uh, not to interrupt you, Jamie, but-
No, you're fine.
Um, that particular account is one that has to be spent within, I believe that's 27 months.
That's the net school spending?
Uh, no, that's the sped 240. The sped 240 has to be spent, like, as I was saying, some of them have to be, like Rural Aid, for example, has to be spent in the year that you receive it. You will see that we have 23 and 24 Rural Aid. That's because, um, it wasn't being, it wasn't being monitored the correct way, and according to DESI, you can only spend Rural Aid in the year that you're receiving it. And when we've been working with DESI, they've said, uh, we understand things haven't been quite copacetic. Spend your money and then start clean. So that's-
So that 126,000, you can't spend it because you've missed the date that you were allowed to spend it by? Or it's already?
No, the 126, um, is that on the balance here?
Yes, right there, the one, the sped 240, see right there?
Yes.
128,000.
We will be spending, um, we will be spending 100, what did it say, 117 of that, 120? Yeah, we'll be spending 117 of this 120, of this 128.
No, those are, those are mixed, Dawn. That's, that was Rural Aid. We're talking sped, right?
Right, Dawn, you went back to Rural Aid.
Oh, I did, I went back to Rural Aid, I'm sorry. Uh, let me get my eyes straight here. Sped 240. So we'll be, sped 240, we'll be spending 150,000.
So that's the, the difference is the 27, 6, 30?
Yes, yes, yes. And so if we go back to that balance, we didn't have all that balance. So we're, we're spending everything, and we need a little bit more.
That's the deficit, that's what, okay.
Yes, yep, yep. And then on REAP. Um, REAP, we had planned to spend 56,000, and again, these two things, there's money that was spent, but it wasn't offsetting anything that was up above. So in terms of the offset to the budget, it was 56,500, and we are going to only be spending 45, so we picked up about $10,000 there. Um, then when we go down to sped 262, so sped 240 is basically for, um, special education at the high school level, and sped 262 is at the elementary school level. And so we had, so that's a much smaller number. We had planned 7,500, um, and we are going to spend the 7,500, so there's nothing additional there. Um, then when we get down to the title grants, um, they have very specific requirements, and we are spending everything that we have in '24, cause this is one of those grants, I believe, that transcends the year. I think you have, um, I think you have a little extra time to spend that. Do you know if that's true, Eliza? Am I telling the truth on that?
Uh, for some reason, I feel like you have till August 31st of the following year. So I think for FY24, I think you can spend it until August 31st of 2025.
Yeah, so that-
It might not be quite right, but it's, it, this is what we've spent so far, this is what we projected to spend, and we're going to be a little bit under that for '25, so that gives us another 17,000 in the pot, um, along with that 10,000. And then we get down to Title IV. Um, we had 10,000 available, um, we have 10,000 that we're gonna use, so that doesn't, uh, uh, so that is contributing, no, let's see, that's not contributing anything, it shouldn't be. Let me see, let me go back here. 65, so this 65 we're spending, so that doesn't contribute anything. We had 10, and hmm, I thought we were spending this full amount. Yeah, so we are. So this 10,000, it's, it's in there, I guess they, I, I don't understand this one myself at this moment. I have to think about it. It says it's not offsetting the budget. So we're gonna need to use that 10,000. This 10,000 did not offset something that was already in the budget. So we're going to need an additional 10,000. And then ARPA, um, we hadn't budgeted anything.
It's a surplus, um, Dawn, like, with the way it is right now, that's looking like it's a surplus? No, right there, that looks like it's a surplus that we would add to the 10 and the 17. So if that's not correct-
Yes, that's true, that's true, that's true. That is a surplus. Um, thank you, Jamie, thanks for paying attention.
So I'm wondering if the, if the comment is just wrong. The comment should be full amount is offsetting the budget instead of not-
Well, no, it's, it's that this amount, this amount-
It looks like it didn't get used for whatever was allocated for.
Exactly.
Right, right, okay.
Exactly. And so then this amount, um, we hadn't planned originally to use, well, I, I, I guess it wasn't planned in the budget, but then thirty three thousand was used, um, of that. And, um, to offset, I, I believe that's the neurodiversity program, is that correct?
Dawn, I believe that was the money that was available up until December, and then that was it.
Yes.
If that's-
But because it wasn't anticipated, we, we need that thirty three as well. So there's an additional eighty eight thousand when you look at this ins and outs. And so it brings down where we were formerly at, um, three hundred and thirty thousand over. Now we're at two hundred and nineteen thousand over. And then we have some additional offsets that we can recommend. And that is Title One has some additional remaining money in it. And so we're saying, all right, let's use about ninety five hundred of that. Rural aid, which must be spent this year, has another sixty eight thousand left. So let's use that. And then this extraordinary relief, extraordinary relief is, um, an, an allocation that one gets for sped if you make an application. In, so you make the application in this year for your current year expenses. And to get any circuit breaker expenses, to get any circuit breaker reimbursement, you have to reach a threshold of about fifty six thousand per student. Anything over fifty six thousand, you, it generates a circuit breaker, uh, a circuit breaker claim, and then that claim is, is reimbursed to you at a certain level, like seventy five percent of the amount over your threshold gets reimbursed. Beyond that, in your current year, if you go over other thresholds, which are something like a hundred and twenty five percent of what you spent last year, I know there's a lot of numbers, but what I'm saying is, if you can achieve a certain threshold and you apply for it, and our sped director did apply for it and received extraordinary relief, that must be used in your current year to offset your current year expenses because that's the basis for which that calculation was made. So, so we had a lot of, um, sped expenses. It met the threshold, the various thresholds, and they gave us, um, with quotes around it, another fifty four, almost fifty five thousand. So then that brings our over budget figure from two nineteen to one thirty two. I mean, uh, what we can apply, um, from whatever we had to one thirty two, and it brings our over budget situation down to eighty seven thousand. And last week or the week before, when you got together, that's what we were asking for from Bradley and Scott. Subsequent to that, we've scrubbed some numbers, some more, and the school committee has made some suggestions. And we have, um, we have costs for summer school that will be transferred from the general fund to sped two forty. Remember that one where we had just a little bit left over? Um, so what we're asking the town to identify, um, is about fifty nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And I'm sorry that took so long to go through.
No, it was perfect, that's what the information we were asking for, so.
Okay, well, that's how we came down to that number.
And Dawn, I have one question though, and that, the fifty nine thousand, two fifty, fifty eight, that is only for, that's all relative to Southampton students, not a shortfall?
Only Southampton, only Southampton. This is only Southampton and, um, yeah.
So all the additional towns absorb their cost of the same chart?
Yes, they've, they've had to do-
Biggest in the whole district, so obviously-
They've had to, right, they've had to do the same thing, um, go through and identify. Um, yeah, I think Southampton might be, um, a little bit ahead when it comes to identifying the timing because typically you don't have to close your books until, well, you, you, you get your encumbrances through July. But we have until September to close the books. So this is what we know at this point in time, which I feel is, is pretty reliable, but-
Madam Chair, this is Stephen Johnson.
Go ahead.
For the purposes of discussion, I'd like to move that the, uh, Select Board, um, with input from the Finance Committee, consider approval of sixty thousand dollars worth of, um, deficit transfers to the school district, all in the, um, prior year encumbrances.
Okay, I think, yeah, so this was on the master sheet from Bradley that we had gotten. It's talking about prior year encumbered expenses that had been around eighty three thousand.
I'm sorry, I read the wrong line.
Yeah.
No, you did read the right line. No, you read the right line because it wa, it was eighty three, but then we, we said you could bring it down to fifty nine.
Right.
If you would like to give this school eighty three, the school would be more than delighted to take it.
And so I, I think-
I just want to move the discussion in an appropriate manner.
All right, so the fifty nine thousand, two fifty, thereabouts is what you're asking for, but it would be transferred to make up that deficit from prior year encumbered expenses, is that correct?
That's, that's a question, um, Bradley would answer.
We were proposing, I think, on this end, so is that?
Yes.
Yeah. From that sheet that we were working from, okay?
Yeah, and I think the sixty thousand would be a good round figure because-
All right.
You know.
Fine, so we have a motion from Stephen, uh, for sixty thousand transferred from prior year encumbered expenses to cover elementary expenses. Ellen, could I have a second?
Second.
All right. Select Board, all those in favor? Roll call, please.
DeBruin, aye.
Gunnson, aye.
Falls, aye. Okay, um, does Finance need to vote on this as well? Okay, Finance, folks?
So I'll, I'll make a motion that the Finance Committee approve, um, a transfer sixty thousand dollars for the schools.
I'll second.
Hey, Becky.
Was that Becky?
Yeah, hmm, that's me.
Okay.
Um, all in favor?
Hamel, aye.
Green, aye.
Plimpton, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Okay, so it looks like that has been approved, so thank you very much on that. And I hope that will help us with the ARPA questions that we were having on this end because I know the neurodiversity program, uh, had begun early on in the first year or so of it, had done some, some reporting back to us on the quarterly reports about the expenses for the various teachers that were involved in that program. But then it kind of fell off and we were not having reports. So I'm hoping that this will then help us satisfy our ARPA reporting as well. So any more from the school, is that good, Dawn, anybody else?
I think so. I mean, I, I have one question. And that is, um, this was done based on, you know, our best estimate of everything that we've seen, the invoices that were put in, et cetera, et cetera. If, if it varies from what we've put together, um, what do we do? I mean, I don't expect it to vary widely, but we're down to the little nats eyeball with dollars and cents. And so, um, I, I'm just asking, like, what, what is your procedure typically?
You, you mean for another transfer for this year?
Um, because you, you don't close your books ju, June thirtieth. I mean, you, you, you spend some time getting your books in order and scrubbing the data, et cetera. And so, um, Bradley typically would close in, in September?
We're going to close earlier than that.
This fiscal year, we can only transfer up to July fifteenth, I think, right, Bradley?
Yeah, we can only transfer-
Encumbered?
Seven fifteen, yeah.
If you need to encumber something, that'd be different.
Right.
Okay.
Seven fifteen is our last transfer timeframe, for sure.
Okay, so these, these would be considered, um, line code transfers or encumbrances?
No, it'd be a transfer.
Line code transfers, okay. So, um, I know we, we will have another warrant that is being processed right around now. And, you know, I'll take another look at it, but I, I really think this is good. But just wanted to say, just wanted to understand if it's, if it varies a little bit, what, what we do. So thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Dawn, everybody.
Okay.
Okay, so let's, let's pick up and go down through the list here. So we have, um, requests from General Highway, uh, to transfer eighty one thousand dollars from General Highway wages to General Highway expenses. Uh, Randall, would you like to talk to us about that, please?
Sure. So as anybody who's been around a while knows, um, we often steal from the General Highway account to cover other, uh, underfunded line items such as machinery maintenance or winter roads expenses. We've covered it in the past. So at this time, we have, um, money in an unfilled highway positions. And I would like to transfer that into General Highway to cover work that I have scheduled and is underway.
Randall, I think, um, what our question was before was it, I think you show a surplus though of like a hundred and something thousand. So if that eighty one thousand would go to free cash and allow us to, you know, if you already had the money to support it, why are we going to take that position and transfer it instead of letting it go to free cash for other things?
So the pavement preservation and crack seal work that I have, which is underway and hopefully will be done by the end of the week, is a hundred and seventy two thousand, seven hundred and sixty seven dollars. The police detail for this work comes up to, uh, an estimated thirteen thousand, a hundred and twenty and eighty cents.
So how comes there's not an encumbrance for it then? Because if it was encumbered, we wouldn't even be, it looks available, like it's not under a PO to the contractor. So that's why the committee had asked about, um, there was a surplus. Why are we transferring when there was such a large surplus?
So I believe we sent, we have an encumbrance, but I don't know if Robin already sent this to Bradley. Bradley, did you get an encumbrance from Robin for all of these?
Uh, I don't believe I did.
So that's where the committee, that's why we were asking.
All right, yeah, I, I, I think we were, the work would be done by the end of the, sorry, go ahead.
If had we seen the encumbrance, we probably wouldn't have asked because we would have seen that money in the line was spoken for, for the road project. And then we would have said, yeah, of course, that makes sense. So that's why, then, you know, you were at, you were saying why, that's why.
Okay, all right, yeah, no problem. Um, this is a new accountant, new town administrator, uh, new Finance Committee. So as, if I know what the procedure is, we will get our ducks in a row. Um, is that what, so, so what do we do here?
Okay, before we get to that, can I ask a high level question, Randall? So was this anticipated work that wasn't originally budgeted when we put together FY twenty five? Right, it, it seems like, especially like high level, when we have the funding, you know, kind of shortfall and crisis at the school, right? That, you know, collectively across all departments, we should be considering, right? Excess, you know, funds, uh, to, to Jamie's point, right? You know, I know that you're generating, you know, excess funds because we're budgeting positions that weren't filled. But, you know, when we then go to apply that to unbudgeted jobs, right? It, it seems like we should be considering, right, across all the departments for the taxpayers, what is the best, you know, use of those funds? So I'm not saying it's not this project for, was this something that, you know, wasn't budgeted for, but you were anticipating the excess, um, funds because of position?
We've covered previous expenses, overages that sometimes were anticipated. I mean, I've been lobbying for the whole winter roads thing for years that we should be funding it appropriately instead of stealing from General Highway every year. So from the perspective that we've been underinvesting in our infrastructure for years, now we've got, because our, our new budget for FY twenty six and this year, we've, we've covered the overage in winter roads, the anticipated overage in winter roads because we know what an average winter costs and have flatlined it for years. Now we're covering it, so I need to invest something in Southampton's roads. Education is amazing, but I wouldn't be doing the taxpayers, uh, I would be doing them a disservice by not getting money that's been appropriated for highway back into the roads and infrastructure, is my feeling, high level.
So for, for years, we've been putting the cost for snow removal into our general expenses instead of, uh, putting in that specific line item and taking it from free cash. So this allows Randall to actually, uh, put the money that's budgeted for, uh, road maintenance for road maintenance.
But just to bring up eighty one thousand dollars budgeted for position isn't budgeted for a road. We should have been budgeting for the road projects in our annual budget. It was budgeted eighty one thousand as a position to support the town, so-
I don't disagree with you, however, it wasn't wage, wages that have covered overages in previous years weren't budgeted for those either.
No, I'm not saying that at the end of the year, I don't support a transfer of it. But we're saying that, like, we're not funding a position, an employment position as a cushion for the budget every year is what, that's not a best practice, is what I'm saying.
No, I completely agree.
Oh, okay.
I'm telling you, in previous years, we have used, let me back up, Jamie, you're, you're new and I've dug it and, uh, has heard this spiel before. So my budget can be very, very chaotic. You, if you could tell me how many storms I'm going to have, how many overtime-
Of course, I get it.
You know, the price of oil goes up and then commodity prices go up, asphalt goes up. I mean, if you can tell me what all of those-
I know, but I don't know why we don't lock in at an annual gas price. Like, other communities lock in, like, we lock, other surrounding communities locked in at two fifty a gallon. So then we know what we're budgeting for, for, for unleaded and, and diesel annually, you know?
So we do, we go out through, um, for procurement-
Yeah, lower primer value, probably, right.
But the contracts are being signed now and we approved the budget a month ago.
Right, but I'm saying-
So I don't know what the prices are until now.
Oh. Gotcha.
So I'm giving it my best estimates based on past data as to where those commodity prices are going to be. But, I mean, I think it's, I hope it's easy to see how, how volatile the costs are. And so what ti, what typically happens is, I don't spend money in the beginning of the year because I, I have an obligation to cover highway expenses with highway budget. And if I have to move stuff into machinery maintenance because I have pieces of equipment that are crucial for my operations that go down, I'm going to get those repaired. And so I've got money that's supposed to go into General Highway, but if something more important comes up, uh, I've got to use that money to get the, that particular piece of equipment repaired or, you know, those sort of expenses. So typically, it comes towards the end of the year and then I figure out, what can I do with this money? And then it's, then it's a game to try and figure out, can I get everything scheduled I want? You know, you're pushing, always pushing the end of the year. I could still have a truck go down, and then what do I do? Then I have to wait, either let, let that truck be down for a month while I get my new budget? I mean, that's, that's how I've done the budget in the past. And I, I, if there's another way, I'm open to, um, discussing it, how, how we budget correctly and get work done that we need to get done.
No, I was just, again, we met last time and we, we couldn't, when, when you said, you know, this is how historically we've done it transfer wise. This, this Finance Committee's questions was, we saw a surplus in the line. There wasn't, it wasn't an encumbrance for the road project because then we wouldn't have seen a surplus and we wouldn't have had the question. So again, it's, it's good dialogue to understand. I am new to the committee, but I'm not new to municipal finances. I run a department and I procure for an entire city. So I'm very well versed in this stuff. So again, but we only have two meetings a year where we vote on how to distribute finances. So I get it, but, so I, I appreciate the explanation. You know, I'm trying to learn how things are done here, so thank you, Randall.
I think the upcoming budgets can be a little bit more, uh, organized as well with, with the, um, the amount that Randall requested, should be able to, oh, raise hands, should be able to cover, uh, his expenses.
Yeah, Becky, you've got your hand up.
So I guess just to clarify, um, piggybacking on Doug's question. So this eighty one thousand is being moved because it's money that was left over and- And so we're trying to spend it on a project for the roads, but it was not a project that was initially budgeted for?
So my interpretation of it was that the eighty one thousand was a position that we did not fill. So it was a salary position. So they're moving to move it over to, yes, there's a road project. So the hundred and twenty eight thousand dollar surplus, we questioned at the last meeting. Randall said it's going to be encumbered for this paving project and for, and if that's a hundred and seventy something, so there's going to be a deficit there. So that's what I got. And I wanted to chime in my understanding so they can correct the both of us.
That's correct.
Yeah. And what, Randall, was that one position not filled or two?
Well, uh, we've, we've had four open positions for quite a while. One of them's been filled and another offer has been made. So I won't spend that money by the end of the year. But we're trying to get those positions filled because there is a backlog of work. You can't really see that board up there that is just not getting done. And we're getting further behind on on things that are, that are breaking.
Regular maintenance kind of things. Yeah, okay. Uh, Stephen, are you still here or have you disappeared on us? Not seeing you.
Hello? Nobody's there.
Stephen, you're still here?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Okay, I wasn't seeing you. I just wanted to be sure that select board still had a quorum. Does anybody else have any questions on this? We've got several more lines to go through. Are we ready to make a motion on this or do we have questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. Stephen.
All right. So although this particular expense was not, um, anticipated line item in the current fiscal year budget, it is part of a multi-year, if you will, capital program for maintaining our roads. And while I wish Randall could have filled the staff positions and built up a stronger crew, this is not different materially from us having to hire out road sweeping two times a year because we haven't kept up the investment in our road sweeper. So this is how business gets done. And I would like to afford our road commissioner, uh, the flexibility to do this. With an encouragement to fill out his crew, even though that might not provide the specific street sweeping or road resurfacing skills that we need on an annual basis. Therefore, I'm really advocating for some flexibility with road budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Anyone else comment?
Uh, I guess, uh, this Doug Hamill again to to chime in. I, I'm also in support of giving Randall this flexibility. And this has been like the historical treatment. I acknowledge that. I think my point that I'll end with is just, right, I, this is, this is a necessary transfer. Um, if Ra- if Randall had, you know, the good fortune of having these positions filled, you know, this, these funds would not be here, right? And I think it makes sense to keep in this organization. But I think we should also acknowledge that this sort of obscures, right? The, the lack of funding available for his actual, you know, repair and upkeep of the infrastructure, the roads. So, you know, it's good that we have this available. Um, but, you know, if we were in a position where we were fully funded, we wouldn't have this luxury to make this transfer.
Right, if we were fully, that's correct, yeah. Okay. If no further discussion on this, could somebody on the select board make a motion? Ellen or?
I make, make a motion, uh, yeah, I make a motion that we transfer the amount of eighty one thousand dollars from General Highway wages to General Highway expenses.
Okay. Stephen, would you second, please?
Second.
All right. Okay, any further discussion, select board? Hearing none, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Johnson, aye.
Debra, an aye.
Okay, foul's aye, okay. Finance?
I make a motion to support the transfer to, um, from highway employment position to, um, highway expenses.
I'll second.
Um, under any more discussion, I, I think I would just like to say that, um, going forward in any way possible, I would prefer to, uh, budget for the expenses um, that we see that we might need as opposed to relying on unfilled positions. So if that means more money in Randall's budget, then so be it.
Yeah, I would love that because I compared a level service budget and it was cut by seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And I, I would agree with that, too. And it's kind of sets a precedent in other departments, too. If people have a certain lump of money and they're going to spend it how they see fit after the budgeting process has already been done.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Green, I mean, agreed, agreed.
So, uh, all in favor?
Uh, green, aye.
Hamill, aye.
Plimpton, aye.
Morrow, aye.
Okay, very good, thanks. Um, anything else for highway related, uh? Don't think so. Is the bottom one taking, uh, maybe what we have, Randall, just taking from winter roads wages?
Yeah, I wasn't involved in any of those discussions, so.
Okay.
Going on.
Why, why would we have an excess in winter roads wages? Just because of a, of an easier winter?
Well, no, I think what happened was there was a number submitted for the overage and it didn't account for, Bradley, do you remember, are you on here? There was a remainder after the winter roads wages and expenses were combined?
When we did the free cash transfer, we transferred more money than we needed to cover the deficit for winter roads. So we have, I think it was seven thousand or something additional in winter road wages. So because of a group health insurance deficit from our final payroll deduction warrant, I decided to pull that money from winter road wages.
Okay. All right. So I just wanted to be sure if there was something that Randall needed to chime in on. We'll come back down. We'll just keep on going down through the line here and we'll get back to that. But I just didn't know if Randall had anything to say. Yeah.
Chris, I had originally had four transfers and I don't know, did the rest of them get taken care of last meeting? And I apologize for not being here. I had a prior commitment. There was a, a transfer to highway building for six thousand, five hundred and twenty seven. There was, uh, yeah, the, I didn't know if I was supposed to transfer the expense, the winter roads wages into the winter roads expenses. Or is that something that just gets done automatically at the, uh, uh, journal entry?
I added that to the first transfer request and I believe that was approved in the first meeting.
Okay, uh, how about the highway expenses? Was that approved to go, uh, I'm sorry. General expenses to highway building? Because we had a deficit there of a six thousand, five hundred and twenty seven or estimated?
Yeah, I, I believe all your, all your transfers were approved except this eighty one thousand dollar transfer.
Okay, all right, very good. I just wanted to check because this is the last time we're transferring, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That is all.
Good, thank you, Randall.
Yep.
Okay, um, next up.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, fire department, uh, chief. This is from fire department wages, seven thousand, request to move to fire department expenses. Uh, Chief, please.
This is for the new pickup that was approved. Uh, originally I requested fifty eight thousand, four hundred and fifty. I received fifty four thousand, six hundred and fifty, a difference of thirty eight hundred dollars. And by the time I was able, I was approved to order the pickup and be, working with the dealer, the price went up, uh, so I have a difference of six thousand, three hundred and forty nine dollars and sixty cents for, you know, to be able to put the decals on it, the, the emergency lights and, uh, radios. So that took that seven thousand dollars as for, that would, uh, coming out of my fire department wages to the fire expense.
All right, thank you. Anyone have questions?
I'm sorry, I did not download the packet. I just got back in town. Do we have that itemized or we just salute the chief and say, good work?
We have the. Yeah, go ahead, Bradley.
I've attached in the email to everybody. I have the invoice for six thousand, three hundred and forty nine sixty available from McGovern MHQ Inc.
There we go.
It is there.
I never doubted that. It's just we're trying to get a good process in place.
Yeah. All right. Good, all right.
Is that being shared? Yeah, can everyone see the invoice?
No.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if it was on the old screen. Okay.
No, they're not.
I, oh, you're not, I don't know. I'm on school screen.
You've got to share it somewhere at the bottom of the zoom.
Try to test a little better here.
Hold on a minute.
Oh, share.
Share again.
There we go.
There you go, now you can see it. Okay, that's the, for the truck related for installation.
So the, the trucks have ordered already, right, chief?
Yes.
Okay, so the approval, the question is to move.
I don't want anybody to throw tomatoes at us because this is a completely legitimate thing.
Yeah. Okay, so anybody else have questions? Finance, any questions or on your end?
I'm here.
Okay. If not, I'll take a motion from.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, forgive me if I failed civic, but if the select board is operating on the advice of the finance committee, I would really prefer to hear the finance committee perspective before we vote.
I was thinking the same thing, Stephen, but I didn't know how you guys did it here, so.
Well, we often haven't had a, a functional finance committee to join us for end of year transfers, so we will take that.
Understood.
Valid point.
Yes, I agree with you, Stephen. So I'll make a motion from the finance committee to approve the six thousand, three hundred and forty nine dollar and sixty cent transfer, um, for the chief to pay the McGovern MHQ invoice.
Are we actually transferring seven thousand?
Seven thousand was the.
So I'm, I'll amend my motion to make a motion to transfer seven thousand dollars from the salary line to the expense line to pay this invoice to MHQ.
I'll second Jamie's amended motion.
Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Nope. Um, so, uh, all in favor?
Hamill, aye.
Reggie, aye.
Morrow, aye.
Plimpton, aye.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much for that procedural correction here. Um, let's see, uh, select board, motion, please?
Make a motion, we transfer the amount of seven thousand dollars from fire department wages to fire department, sorry, uh, yeah, fire department to fire department expenses.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Debra, an aye.
Johnson, aye.
Foul's aye, okay, passes, thank you. All right, election, uh, wages, Lucy Dalton is here, uh, from election registration expenses and town clerk expenses, the amount of three thousand, one hundred and ninety three dollars and sixty nine cents for election registration wages. Lucy, would you like to walk us through a little bit?
We can't hear you, Lucy.
Lucy?
Lucy, can you hear me now?
Yes.
You can hear now.
Okay, so, uh, obviously I didn't budget enough for election wages and we had two major elections, um, the price of ballots, um, went up. We had more people come for the September, the November election. We had a special town meeting. So we had to have more people on. And so I guess that's my reasoning and I figured we could take more money that I had in the town clerk expenses to cover this. Um, and I had some left over in the election registration expenses. So those two combined will make up for the election registration, registration wages. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Lucy. Okay, finance, take it away.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the three thousand, one hundred and ninety three dollars and sixty nine cents for the wages coming from the expenses and town clerk expenses.
I'll second the motion.
Other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Hamill, aye.
Reggie, aye.
Morrow, aye.
Plimpton, aye.
Okay, and select board? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, um, for this year's budget, I budgeted more because in previous years I was only allowed to budget a certain amount and was turned away from, uh, amounts that I had suggested budgeting. So this year I budgeted more in my budget for wages and expenses to cover emergency special town meetings, emergency elect, special elections. So, um, I appreciate you approving this.
Good job, Lucy, thank you.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Lucy.
Yeah, yeah. To the extent that you submit the detail, I'm sure Scott's going to pick that up. Um, and it's going to be part of the budgeting going forward. That's really critical. We're building a new foundation.
Right. We have a, can someone select board, please?
Move approval.
Okay.
Second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Johnson, aye.
Debra, an aye.
Foul's aye, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I just say something? It is really nice that we have a finance committee that will actually look at the budget and make recommendations. So thank you very much.
Yeah.
Yay for that.
Thanks, Lucy.
Thank you, Lucy.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
All right.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, next, uh, got a couple of lines to go, not too much more. So from, uh, winter roads wages, seven hundred and fifty dollars to cover postage, uh, Scott, can I speak to that?
Um, this is mostly from the treasurer collector's office, but this is just due to the increase in postage and, um, the June bills going out. I'm not sure if we have much, Bradley, do we have any other information from that from Jen?
So basically what you said is correct, but ish, this transfer should have been included on the first transfer request, but I erroneously forgot to include it. And originally Jen requested to move it from the reserve fund, so I add it to this answer request. And because I was thinking of using the reserve fund in the elementary school transfer, I decided to use winter road wages since we have money available in that account. But yes, the bill, the price increased and there's a lot of bills in June.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, all right. Any questions, finance, go ahead.
Their motion?
Make a motion to move, um, seven hundred and fifty dollars from winter road wages into postage.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Any discussion? Okay.
Reggie, yes.
Hamill, yes.
Morrow, yes.
Plimpton, yes.
Okay, and same on select board?
Make a motion and transfer the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars from winter roads wages into postage.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Debra, an aye.
Johnson, aye.
Foul's aye, okay, very good, approved. Uh, next one, veterans benefits, six hundred and eighty six dollars and twenty four cents to move that to veterans agent expenses.
So this is from our, uh, Michelle Murdock, who's our veterans, uh, service officer. Um, she had to purchase a new printer that she likes to keep in her office just due to confidentiality. Um, additionally, if you've been by her office or been into any of the events, um, it's just for some purchases of additional items that go along with our veterans coffee hour and our veterans, uh, benefits fair and things like that. So, uh, the majority of this is actually just a printer.
I'll make a motion. Oh, go ahead and let somebody add discussion.
Just say again, the source?
Uh, it'll be transferred. Uh, it'll be transferred from the amount that we budget for veterans benefits and it'll be transferred to uh veterans agent expenses.
Right, okay.
And there was a surplus, uh, in veterans benefits, that's why you're.
Right.
Yeah, we're not taking, we're not taking any veterans benefits.
Okay, finance, motions go.
So I'll make the motion to transfer the six, I, sorry, my eyes.
Eighty six, twenty four.
Twenty four to um veterans agent expenses.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hamill, aye.
Reggie, aye.
Morrow, aye.
Limpson, aye.
All right, very good, and picking up with select board?
Make a motion to transfer uh six hundred and eighty six dollars and twenty four cents from veterans benefits to veterans agent expenses.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
DeBruin, aye.
Um, Sun, aye.
Falls, aye. Okay, thank you. And I guess our very last one, uh, total of three thousand eleven dollars from Winter Road's wages to cover group health insurance in the amount of fourteen, fourteen hundred ninety dollars and twelve cents and group health retiree amounts for fifteen hundred and twenty dollars and eighty eight cents. Scott?
Oh, this is just uh from the last uh our final payroll deduction warrant. Uh, we were in a deficit for our health uh insurance um this year, and this will just wrap up for the uh final one. Uh, Bradley, do you have anything else on this part?
Yeah, we had a transfer request in the first round for both these accounts, and I believe those were just estimates. We got close, but just when we got the final number, they went over by that three thousand eleven dollars.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for um, I guess Bradley and Scott. So total together, what was the deficit for the um insurance and retiree this year? Because obviously we, there were significant increases like across the state. Some towns and cities fifteen to eighteen percent, so what, and and did we budget to cover that increase in FY twenty six? Are we anticipating already a, a, a pretty big deficit between?
Um, well, so a lot of the cost drivers for our health insurance was due to
The weight loss drugs.
The weight loss drugs, which were discontinuing in October through the group trust, so that should help stabilize uh next year's. Um, the other thing is, you know, over the last couple of years, we've had a lot of vacant positions, um, like Randall's positions, we had the, the two firefighters, we've got a few other positions that have traditionally been unfilled. This year we've um, on the, on the good side, you know, it's good to fill the positions, but those types of positions do cost money on the benefit side. Um, so depending on whether someone takes benefits or not, um, we've had them uh come on and take benefits. Um, so I, we did uh for this upcoming fiscal year, Jen did budget for the additional positions um and a little bit of uh leeway.
But what about for the increase that went up across the state? So we levelly funded for FY twenty six or just a little bit? So we should be expecting a shortfall again next year potentially?
Oh, no, we, we budgeted for the full eighteen percent increase.
Okay, okay, okay.
Um, as long as we don't have an influx of people actually coming on, I think we will be okay.
Okay, no, that's good, thank you.
So the total.
All right.
Total between the.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
The, the original transfer was for fifty nine thousand five hundred and this one is for three thousand eleven, so the total transfer deficit was sixty two thousand five hundred eleven.
Which isn't awful, I will say from a, it's not awful when, you know, we're paying for four hundred and fifty on, four hundred and fifty hundred thousand dollars a year, so with an eighteen percent, fifteen to eighteen percent increase to only be short sixty two thousand, I, it's not awful compared to other cities and towns, I'm just saying from what I've seen across the state, so.
Good, that's, that's good to hear. Thanks, Jamie. That's encouraging.
Well, for the taxpayers that don't understand, like, um, you, you know, i- i- it seems like a lot, but other towns, you know, were a million dollar deficit because they didn't plan for an eighteen percent increase, so we're not in bad, bad shape for people that don't understand.
Right, very good. Okay, so, uh, no other questions? Finance, take it away.
Their motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the three thousand eleven dollars from Winter Road wages to cover the group health insurance and retiree.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hamill, aye.
Limpson, aye.
Morrow, aye.
Reggie, aye.
Okay, and last one.
Move approval?
All right.
Johnson, aye.
Do we have a second first, please?
Second it.
All right, no discussion? Okay, Johnson, go ahead.
Johnson, aye.
DeBruin, aye.
Okay, falls, aye. All right. That is approved, and I think that takes us through our entire, entire list. So this is the end of our budget transfers for this fiscal year, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So it's good. I mean, in the past, I think you guys heard at the last meeting, we would often do, you know, five or six meetings on budget transfers, so it's good to not have to do many, many, so thanks for trying to group them together and make more sense out of them. I think we just have a couple of other small, well, not small, but a couple of other items on the agenda.
Uh, so do treasure next?
Yes, so I'm gonna have to turn it over to Scott just to talk about um our treasurer collector situation, uh, just have a discussion about that.
Yep, um, so uh, we're having a little bit of turnover in our um treasurer collector department. Uh, Jen, last day will be tomorrow, we did receive a resignation.
Sorry.
Okay.
Go away, go away.
Uh, so we did have a resignation, it is effective uh tomorrow. It's not, I mean, ideally it would have been several weeks to finally get a resignation letter um and, and the date, um, so it is you know, we're, we're doing our best, so we do have a uh process in place. Um, there's uh two candidates that I have reached out and have uh said that they would be interested in uh helping out during this transition. I think that ultimately we're kind of in a weird gray area because you know, it is a recommendation that we move forward with uh changing from elected to appointed, but that won't be able to happen for another ten, eleven months, and assuming it gets voted on, both from town meeting and the um, the citizens. Um, so we have two uh very qualified people. I met with Megan Kane, who would be the first one. Uh, she is a former uh Westfield treasurer collector. Um, she's looking to do some part-time work, maybe fifteen to twenty. I'm gonna try to convince her to do twenty five um hours a week. Um, she would be able to start officially on July fourteenth. Um, she, unfortunately, her daughters have a dance competition next week in Connecticut that she has to attend. Uh, but I met with her today, she's uh very well qualified. Um, she's familiar with Munis, which is essentially a more advanced Vadar, which is what we use. Um, I, I think she's a great candidate to take over um the treasurer collector position um as an appointed part of it. Um, the other thing is that we also have another person that applied, Lynn.
Lemansky?
Lemansky, who um is not as local, but is in the Western Mass area. She's in the Berkshires. Uh, she is a CPA, she is very familiar with um Vadar. Um, she's also used a lot of our other um software that we use. Uh, she has municipal um experience working in treasurer collector uh places, helping them to catch up on unpaid bills, you know, warrants, things like that. Um, she's a little bit of about forty five minutes to an hour away, but she is willing to come in a few days a week, uh, but would eventually be primarily um remote.
Scott, I'm sorry, Scott? May I?
Yep.
Stephen?
We're being recorded. Are we being broadcast?
Not live, we're being recorded.
Are we revealing too much personal detail about the candidates and should we uh adjourn into executive session?
Uh, no, I, I think when we were talking about the qualifications, it would have to be an open session anyways, um, because we're not really recruiting as much as I, I think we're just talking about the plan moving forward.
Okay, you, you are much more expert than I on this, but I really didn't want to go too deep.
Yeah, I did talk to Megan and she's okay with her name obviously being public. Um, so I, I think it's um, so with those two people, um, both would be part-time. Um, their wages are a little bit more, I won't go into that part. Um, uh, so I, I'm recommending that uh Megan Kane be appointed the treasurer collector uh interim, and then we would bring on um Lynn as a consultant in that capacity, and they would special, and she would specialize in specific areas, um, and would report to Megan. Uh, Megan would essentially still be running the office. Uh, the only other problem is we did receive a resignation letter from another employee in the treasurer collector last week. Um, so we are gonna probably um definitely need uh those people right now. Um, it's an opportunity to kind of move forward with uh some of the changes I had mentioned, a little bit premature, um, to make things a little more efficient. Um, so.
So Scott, with the two salary lines in the um treasurer collector's office, will both those lines fund the consultant and the interim treasurer collector?
More than likely not, depending on how many hours, because they're wait, they're requesting more money than what was budgeted for the treasurer, and then we also have a, a vacation payout for the uh person that's leaving. Um, so depending on how quickly we can fill that position, I'm not really quite sure.
And then is the goal when we fill the position to what, cut ties with the consultant and stay with the um interim treasurer collector until either it's re-elected or a charter change and um, okay.
Mm-hmm. That'd be the idea, yeah. Now, I think the one question I would have, if we recall, we did a, a vote at some point in time to put John Lumber in as our temporary interim treasurer, so I would think if you want to do this, we've got to rescind that vote tonight.
Yeah, I just technically, John will be treasurer collector tomorrow.
Oh, he will tomorrow, okay, until, okay, technically until this person actually could start work.
Well.
Or?
Yes, oh, because um the appointment was based on the resignation date of Jen.
Okay.
So until there's another person named, John's gonna be the treasurer collector.
Oh, I see, okay, I take that back, okay. So John is treasurer as of tomorrow, okay. So are we looking to uh appoint Megan this evening or wait until our next meeting?
Um, if you could appoint her, and I still have to work out obviously the employment details with her, but if we appoint her pending um, an agreement on the um, you know, the wage and hours of work.
Then when she took over, then John would cease his work. I see, okay.
So can I ask?
Any questions, yeah.
And I'm just finance committee, but so in this town, we do, like, she's not, neither candidate would interview with the select board. I don't know that I'm, I, and I may be over, like, crossing lanes, um, but I don't, so do you guys take recommendations just based off of the town um at manager or administrator, or do we typically like do, because it's a pretty big deal, the treasurer collector? And I guess if, if, if John's going to be interim until the fourteenth anyways, I don't know if anybody wants to do interviews with the two, if we want to know what the projected um, what's the consultant charging an hour and what is Meg, what are we gonna pay Megan an hour? Because then we need to figure out what our shortfall is moving forward. Um, are we gonna have a hundred thousand dollar deficit at next budget time because of this work? So I'm just asking what the plan is.
Yeah, so after, after I, uh, after we bring on Megan, I'll work with Megan to bring on the other person. Um, and then we can agree to a hourly rate for that person. Uh, we were probably gonna run into a little bit of a deficit, but I don't think it would be too much with the vacant position coming up.
Okay.
So does select board want to interview Megan at all? I know you've met with her already. John has indicated that he knows her. We've gotten a reference from someone already from Westfield uh about her position and her experience. We obviously have more information on her than we do from the other person helping the Berkshires. Um, so so select board folks or anybody, I, what do we feel about needing to uh have Megan in? If so, we would do it on our July eighth meeting. Um, so I suppose it could be an appointment conditioned upon a.
We did, and we did, I, I did advertise the position.
Okay.
Um, so she was the, uh, these two people were the only ones that were qualified um that had treasurer collector experience that applied.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that step. All right. So select board, any thoughts?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm very comfortable moving forward with this recommendation. I would also separately appreciate the opportunity to meet our new treasurer collector and to continue to explore what is the best way forward for this department, because it's, has challenges.
Yeah.
Uh, actually on that, Stephen, that was gonna be my next recommendation. Um, so actually Megan recommended this um as well, I was gonna bring it up to her. Uh, let me just share my screen really quick. One of the things that the state offers is a um, from the DLS, a review of all our financial policies and procedures, as well as recommendations on how we should um organize everything, and um I would like to invite the DLS and to take a look at our uh finances and our financial structure. Um, we haven't done it in about eighteen years. Um, so I think, I don't think a lot has probably changed from the eighteen years, but I think it would be a good practice to have the state come in, look at everything, make an official review. Um, and both, you know, both Megan and I, we were thinking about the same thing, um, doing that.
Uh, perfect segue.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to hear.
That's perfect. Okay. All right, any questions? Uh, anybody else from finance? Reggie, Becky, anybody, Doug?
No, I'm good. It sounded like she had a, a great background.
Yeah, I think Scott circulated around her CV, if I'm not mistaken. You should have gotten that in, in your email.
Yeah, we got her resume.
Yeah, okay. So with, could I have a motion then to appoint Megan Kane as of July?
Fourteen.
July fourteenth, uh, to be the interim treasurer collector.
Uh, pending negotiation.
Pending negotiations of, um, yeah, pending negotiations of her work um, requirements, okay?
Um, make the motion uh to appoint, we say that, to appoint Megan Kane um to interim town collect?
Treasurer collector.
Treasurer collector, thank you, um, as of.
July fourteenth.
July fourteenth.
Mm-hmm, pending negotiations.
Pending negotiations.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll second that. Stephen, uh, any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Johnson, aye.
DeBruin, aye.
Falls, aye. Okay, thanks. All right, so that would get us at least one step down, down the road here. Uh, we've got a lot of work to do, especially if we're gonna have two vacancies, so filling them as quickly as we can with somebody who's qualified, having been a treasurer collector for a number of years in Westfield will be great. Um, so a good, a good sign. So I think uh I've got one more thing for select board, uh, just any other business that can't wait, but finance, if you would like to uh, go ahead and adjourn your meeting, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the finance committee meeting um at seven thirty PM on six thirty twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reggie, aye.
All right.
Madam Chair?
We're down here. I think that looks like finance. All right, thanks, guys.
I'd really like to appreciate the participation in the finance committee. It is a breath of fresh air and insight and grounding. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank all my colleagues here for um welcoming me onto finance committee. I'm excited to be here and, and help out too, so.
Good, glad to have you. All right, thanks, finance folks, and uh.
Happy fourth, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, everybody. Okay, so um Ellen and, and uh Stephen, all I have is actually a request uh for a letter to accompany the land grant application that will be put forth by, technically by the Conservation Commission. Uh, the application is being drafted pretty much by Open Space Committee and the, and Kestrel Land Trust, but this is for a portion of land from the Floric property up on um uh Fuma Road. It's twenty seven acres, and it's going to be known right now anyway as the Alder Pond Conservation Area. Uh, and this is uh land that uh the, the family has agreed to sell to the town. Uh, it's very important land. It's, it's actually um bordering uh Alder Pond already and uh the Surril APR land, so this is really just adding on to that tract of already uh So, this is really just adding on to that tract of already uh conserved land. Uh, and this will be um, something that will be purchased in fee and will, you know, will end up going through CPC money in the fall when there's a special town meeting. But at least to go with the application, thank you, Scott. Um, they need to, to share that, yeah. They need to have a um, uh, just a support letter.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved. And with the second, then we can discuss the, like, ten thousand details that you've raised.
Okay, so, this is a picture of the Alder Pond right off here. And so, this is gonna be the, some of the land is gonna be to the well, to the left of it technically. Um, so it's a lot of the backland uh that is bordering the pond and uh a portion of the other frontland apparently. So, they've, they've had the appraisal done. They've agreed to a price and um, Open Space and, and Community Preservation will be working together on this. But the actual application for a land grant has to come from the Conservation Commission, so that will happen tomorrow. They will be voting on it. So, this application is due July eighth, which is why I'm bringing it up tonight, because it's due before our next meeting. So, if everyone is okay with a support letter from the select board, uh, I draft one and uh have it accompany the application that gets sent in.
Sure.
Then that's the motion I made and with the second, we can talk through.
A second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye, DeBruin, aye.
Wait, 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 discussion.
Oh, discussion, sorry. Go ahead.
So, I, I'm sorry. First, you've done an exceptional job of encapsulating a complex negotiation and resolution in, what, a two-minute presentation? And thank you, Scott, for sharing the locust map. It doesn't show parcel boundaries. And I know they're good and I would love to help you with that, but.
Well, I think, I think this has been done by, by Open Space too. They probably have it already. I just don't have a copy of it, Stephen.
Alright, alright. So, in, in the uh interest of good governance, I will endorse the good judgment of the Open Space Committee, of which I'm a member and the Conservation Commission, which is already taking it up tonight?
They will be taking it up tomorrow night.
Okay.
And then, and CPC actually meets, I believe, on Wednesday night. So, they'll be hearing about it on Wednesday night as well. So, these.
I know the details. I just wish we had better details to share about the.
When, when we have a regular meeting, and I can report on this on the eighth, when the application actually goes in, but um, yeah.
Okay, okay. I wanna back off. Madam Chair, I wanna back off. It's a really good project and I won't tell the story in the best way. So, the citizens can appreciate what we're getting behind. I am fully behind this because I know a lot about it.
Yeah, no, we will, we will definitely have that because we'll have a chance later on to look at the uh conservation restriction and so forth. But all of this will be um preserved and it's really, it's taken the family a while to get to this point, but they they have decided.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
This is, this is where I just get high. Is the proposal that the town would own the fee simple subject to a conservation restriction to another party?
Right, Kestrel will be holding the uh, the conservation restriction from what I know.
There you go. Okay, I, I'm totally behind this and you're ninety-nine and a half percent there. But we don't have the plan of what the town would acquire.
That's true. I do not have any more detail on that tonight because Open Space and Concom are putting the application together as we speak. You will have.
I would like to move support from the letter of support or approval, support.
Right.
Semantics, um, that the town proceed with the land grant application for a portion of the Floric property on Fomer Road.
Okay.
In this town.
Alright. Ellen, would you second please?
I will second.
For, for, for conservation purposes.
Got it. Alright, um, yeah, all those in favor?
DeBruin, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Falls, aye. Okay, and again, this is just the letter of support that goes with the application. They have to get the grant first, which they may or may not. And if they get the grant, all the CPC money would be contingent upon getting the grant. So, all of that language comes much later on, but this is just a support letter to go along with the application.
Um, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Further, further, we cannot commit CPC funds.
Correct, right. We're not doing.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, we're not, we're not committing any CPC funds. That is not our role. They will be, are learning about this themselves. If they haven't already, they will be meeting on Wednesday. And then as with all of these other properties, like we've done with Mount Waters, or any other grants for that matter, where we're acquiring property, it has to go to town meeting and a vote. And it's usually written such that it's contingent upon receiving the grant before any CPC money can be used.
Thank you. That's tied up with the bow. Thank you.
Okay, alright, well, thanks for that. Uh, does anybody else have any other things? I don't have anything else on my agenda.
Not here.
Okay, if not, let's take a motion to adjourn and we will meet again on July eighth.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting at uh, what time is it now?
Seven thirty-eight.
Seven thirty-eight.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Right.
Alright, Falls, aye. Alright, we are adjourned at seven thirty-eight. Thanks guys for chiming in.
Thank you.
Good night.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.